Dr. Hunter Intern. Good first day.
You got the text from Kristen?
Uh, looks like we are on. Evening, everyone. Welcome to the School Board, MSAD 15 School Board Budget Workshop. Penny is out sick tonight, so I will be trying to fill her shoes. We'll see how that goes. Upcoming meetings, January 29th, a week from tonight. It's another meeting like this one, but it'll be in Gloucester. We'll be presenting from Special Services, Adult Ed Transportation Facilities Department as in our second of many budget presentations. So tonight, we have our first group, and Dr. Turner will start us.
Take us off. So I'd like to welcome our team here today. Memorial School Principal Amanda Hennessy and Russell School Principal Danny Blake, Dunn School Principal Jeff Robbins, and then also in a dual role tonight, as she does every day, is Ms. Amanda Hennessy talking about Gifted and Talented, because she is also our Gifted and Talented Coordinator for our district. So this is the kickoff to the department-level reports. It's a follow-up to the written reports that you received just before the holiday break, and an opportunity for the administrators to chat with you about what's going well and what they see as some challenges and things that might need attention in the coming year or coming years. As part of this presentation, there will be an opportunity for questions at the end. I am asking that you save your questions until the end. This is so that we can give all of our staff the opportunity to speak. Sometimes when we do questions midway, we get, you know, a little stuck, and then we're rushed to get through them. We want to make sure everyone is able to share all of their information with you, and then we focus on questions at the end. I have provided everyone with a little sticky pad and a pen, so please feel free to jot those questions down as they're happening, so you don't forget them. And then, when we get to the questions portion of the evening, we will answer questions that are related to sort of understanding context or clarifying things that administrators shared, things that are more complex. We'll be recording on a little parking lot wall, and when we come back for our next budget workshop, we'll have the first agenda item be checking in on parking lot questions, and we'll bring back answers to the rest of it. Same would go if things start to go a little bit late, or if you have questions that you think of afterward, you can send those to the board chair, who will share them with me, and we'll make sure we bring answers back to you at a subsequent meeting. So with that, I would just add, while Danny's getting set here, that all of these documents, as well as links to all of our agendas, our meetings, all of our documents related to the budget can be found on our district website. If you scroll to msad15.org, scroll to the bottom and click on Budget, and you will find a grid that has every single document that we are referencing here and others going backward, as well as what will happen in the future. So I really encourage people to check that out. Mr. Blake?
Awesome. Excuse me. Good evening, everybody. Danny Blake, Principal at Russell School. Thank you for having us tonight. We really appreciate this opportunity to talk about the wonderful things that are happening in our school, and I'm going to jump right in with recognition and celebration. One of the things I think that is so important to recognize is that our students have been working so hard this fall. We saw our first and second graders come back, settle in quickly, and they have been really nose to the grindstone these last couple of months, and ending the first trimester in a really great place. Our schools have wonderful communities. Our families are fantastic. We continue to see post-COVID, an increase in parent participation, volunteering, and that really makes our community school feel really great, a strong community. Families feel connected, students feel connected, and we really want to celebrate that. Our school staff continue to work hard to work for our stakeholders, which are our students. They continue to adapt and to really bend, twist, and turn to meet the many needs of our students. I mean, we talked a little bit about this on our facility store, but we had a small strip of pavement added to the side of the building, and I want to just shout out, because that is like huge recognition and celebration. My staff that are on duty out there are so thrilled. Now that we are in the wet winter months, the plow is not like tearing it all up. It is not like a mud run trying to get kids through the parent pickup line. We are so happy, and it created a wonderful surface for our kids to do chalk. So I think it's really important that we talk about that. They would be a little upset if I didn't. Diving into our goals, last year, we had several of them. Our first goal was to successfully implement eight units of our new math program, Bridges. We feel really good about the work that we did around this goal. We did a full pilot with all staff last year, all math teachers at our school. We did not fully implement all eight units. There was a bit of a learning curve, so we decided to slow down a little bit to make sure that we were covering material in depth. But we were able to successfully complete six of the eight units and feel really good about the results that we got there. In addition to the Bridges program, there is a complementary program called Number Corner that also has eight units. We did successfully implement all eight of those. That is a really great opportunity for kids to spend some time thinking about math differently, looking at the world around them, and how they might use math in the different contexts, looking for patterns in everyday items. We had a lot of fun with that and saw a lot of really great growth as a result of that implementation as well. Moving into our second goal, we always have a goal around increasing student achievement when it comes to reading. We use the Developmental Reading Assessment as one of our markers, and our goal was to increase from 51% proficiency to 70% by June. We snuck in just under that 70%. We made it to 69%, which was a really great feat. We were hoping for 70, but just those last summer days didn't really give us exactly what we were hoping for for student learning. It was a little hot there towards the end. Another metric that we use, though, is looking at student growth over the course of a year. So another piece of data that we are really proud of is that 88% of our students made one year's growth. So looking not necessarily at grade level benchmarks, but where they started in September and where they ended in May. Very proud of that data point. We also have some goals around maintaining and improving our positive school climate and culture. That was really divided into two different pieces. We've talked a lot the last few years about our response to intervention programs. When we are looking at a positive school climate and culture, we're really trying to hone in on those response to intervention as it relates to behavior. And so we've been implementing a number of different strategies to support students' behavioral needs. We have been able to increase, that's a tiered system I should start with. There's Tier One, which is a piece that we have been really working on over the last couple of years. That sort of instruction around school expectations, SOPs, standard operating procedures, different pieces with explicit instruction for students to be able to access sort of how we do school, what that looks like, what that feels like. We had spent a lot of time over the last couple of years in that Tier One. We had made it up to 90% implemented. Last year, we surpassed that and made it to 93% implementation of Tier One, but we spent a lot more time looking at Tier Two. So some more intensive interventions, some things that students need that might be a little more individualized. We increased our implementation of Tier Two supports from 31% to 58%. The other piece that we looked at when we are looking at a positive school climate and culture is our chronic absentee rate. So, you know, we all understand that in order to be able to teach kids, we have to be able to reach them. So we need them here in our schools. COVID, you know, really pushed students out when they were not feeling well, made it so that some of the practices that we had worked really hard to implement pre-COVID, having kids there as often as possible, trying to, you know, strategize when kids, you know, might take a longer vacation or take a vacation in the middle of the year. We had done a lot of work with families around that, and then also with some individual students around strategies for wanting to come to school. And over the last couple of years, that number really spiked, and we've been working diligently to bring it down. Happy to report that we moved that needle from 22% chronically absent in '22, '23 to just under 15% at 14.83% in '23, '24. So we have been really working on those strategies to help get kids to school. We also looked at, you know, in elementary school, I think one of the best ways to get engagement from students is to have engagement from families. And so we spent a lot of time strategizing how we could involve families in our work at Russell School. And my Patriot Parent Reps really talked a lot about, you know, wanting to bring families together for things that are not just academic, so having a good time. We were able to implement two large-scale community events. We held a Fall Festival, which was very successful. Whole families coming to play games, to do different activities, to really just, you know, do kid stuff, face painting, crafts, reading books, those sorts of things, playing on the playground. And then we also held a Shamrock Shuffle, which was a family dance. The kids loved that. It's a little bit crazy and a little bit wild. Families, adults sort of stand back, and the kids, you know, just kind of get into it. But it really was, it was nice, because we could see from the fall to the spring that we had more families intermingling. So parents, you know, having an opportunity to say, oh, you know, I've heard a lot about you and, you know, about your student at home, you know, can we get together outside of school? And I think we made a lot of really positive connections through those family events. Moving into this year, the goals that we established at Russell School are not terribly different. I think the general consensus from my family engagement team, from my staff, is that we're on the right track. We want to have goals that are very similar, in that we want a math goal, we want a literacy goal, and then we want some goals around family engagement and positive school climate and culture. So our first goal for this upcoming year is to increase our proficiency level on the Developmental Reading Assessment from 68% to 75%. You know, it's a lofty goal, and I want to be really upfront about that. You know, typically, we see about, you know, last year, we started with a population that was well under the benchmark. This year, we're a little bit closer to those numbers where we ended last year, which is wonderful. We're not seeing that huge regression. But as we start to get into those top tiers, it is a little harder to move the needle. We have some really good ideas about how to do that this year, and I'll talk in a couple of minutes about our family engagement team, but we're really trying to partner with families to not only do this work at school, but to have families support us in achieving that particular goal. Currently, we are sitting at about 69%, so we've gone up a percent over the first trimester. We had hoped that would be a little bit higher, but feeling really good about where we stand at this moment. Our second goal is going to be a math goal, and we're looking now that we have had an opportunity to implement the new math program, to start having conversations around assessment and ensuring that students are achieving at high levels on those math assessments. Our goal for the upcoming year is to have our student body, at least 75% of them, meeting the benchmark on the Common Assessments. Happy to report that our last data point showed that 80% of our students were meeting those benchmarks for the Common Assessment. As I said, we also are going to look at maintaining and improving our school climate and culture. One of the big things that we are going to try to tackle this year is really bringing family in. So we have established a family engagement team, and this really is something that came out of our work as a newly identified Title I school. One of the things that we recognized was that we had put out, you know, some requests for information and support from families in the past, but we haven't put together a comprehensive team to solicit feedback. So that was one of the pieces that we really knew that we wanted to hone in on for this school year. At this time, I have seven parents who are attending regularly to our family engagement meetings. We are doing, we are looking at ways that those families can support increasing student achievement, as well as using that as a feedback loop to get some information about how we can, as a staff, better support families at home. They have been wonderful. They helped us develop quite an extensive and lofty list of ways that school staff can, could increase communication with families and have families become more active in the learning process. We are now sort of at the point where we are filtering down those strategies and trying to determine which of those will be high-heeled, so that we can get those implemented and get some additional support from our community. We're also going to continue to look at, we're also going to continue to look at the absentee rate. So, you know, again, we really want kids at school, so we want to make sure that we can have them here as much as possible, and also using the family engagement team to get some feedback around that. We really are working hard to flip the mindset, so that, you know, we're not with every single sniffle having kiddos stay home. We kind of have to work with families to understand sort of what that balance is. Those numbers were looking really good around chronic absenteeism. We were hoping to be under 15%. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were sitting at about 17%, so feeling pretty good about that. Unfortunately, the contagion has hit this week, so I did not pull a new number, because I didn't think that would be very helpful today. We have a lot of little germs floating around right now. But what we do notice is that there are trends that this time of the year, that number will go up, but as we get, you know, through the school year a little bit more, that number will start to adjust. And just as a reminder, chronic absenteeism is defined as 10%, missing 10% or more of a school year. So we're really trying to work with families to have students here at least 90% of the time. Let's see. Looking at ways that we can, changes that we can make and recommendations for improvement. One of the things that we have been engaged in over the last year or so is some work around literacy instruction. You know, there's a lot of information floating around about evidence-based strategies and different ways that we can support kiddos. So we have had a good chunk of our staff engage in some professional learning. We, seven of us, have participated in a training called Letters. That is a training that really looks at evidence-based strategies and how we can implement those in classrooms. One of the things as a result of that work, I think we are coming up on a curriculum review for literacy, so I think this is providing a good opportunity for us to build some skill and knowledge around that. And so I would recommend that in the near future, we begin that comprehensive audit of literacy instruction. And then I think another piece is, you know, for the last couple of years, we've been struggling with the amount of time that we lose over the course of an instructional day for things like arrival in the morning, dismissal in the afternoon. You know, that's a pretty lengthy process for us. With littles, five, six, and seven-year-olds, you know, it does require a lot of manpower to move kiddos safely. You know, we are loading, you know, 40 kids a day into cars out back. We're putting the other, you know, 150 onto buses in the front, and we, you know, we can do that process in the afternoon in about 20 minutes. In the morning, that's a little bit trickier. We have a couple of buses that come fairly early due to the reduction in the bus driver. We have a smaller bus, a 14-passenger bus. That bus comes to us, drops off a load, and then heads back out to pick up another load, and then comes and drops off those kiddos. That first bus arrives around 8:15. Our day doesn't start until a little bit after nine. So, you know, we've got about an hour of time where we are providing supervision, but it's not really an instructional time, because there are people going in several different directions. Our first bus arrives at 8:15. Our last bus arrives at, you know, 5 past 9. You know, we can, we've been pretty creative with that time, but I'd like to see us get a little bit tighter, so that we can increase the instructional minutes in our day to fit a little bit more in. Same thing is true in the middle of the day. We have about a 90-minute block. That is our lunch and recess block. Again, with littles, there's a lot of supervision outside, inside, but that is a 90-minute chunk of our day that sort of our intervention stops, as those people are often on duty in the lunchroom with me or on the playground, classroom teachers out and about as well doing those different duties. So hopefully, you know, we can look at ways that we could improve that, so that we find more time to work one-on-one with kiddos. Things that require attention. This list I have brought to you This list I have brought to you for the last several years. We continue to make strides in these areas, but I do think that they still rise to the top. Number one, attracting and retaining high-quality substitute teachers and substitute educational technicians to ensure adequate staffing levels. You know, right now, I have a couple of vacancies in my building. You know, my teacher positions are the first to be picked up. The support staff positions are a little harder to fill. We did, I, I want to give a good plug. Last year, we had talked about adding the permanence up to the regular budget. We did that, that has been hugely successful. The number of hours that we have regained in intervention, that's usually where I end up having to pull substitutes from when we don't fill those positions, is, is pretty incredible. We would like to continue to enhance our response to intervention system to best meet the needs of our learners. Feel like we've talked a lot over the last few years about response to intervention and, and the supports that we provide kiddos. We just are of the feeling that this is an area that we are never going to arrive at. We need to continue to work to, you know, make sure that our interventions are best meeting the, the needs of our students. And, you know, we, we always want to be on the lookout for, for sort of new shiny things that can, can really support students in a fun and engaging way. Work to attract and retain high-quality staff, especially in the areas of support staff positions. I've got a couple of, I think I have two, two currently, open special ed ed tech positions that have not been filled. One of the things that's been great is we have a couple of substitutes that are willing to come in pretty regularly to help support in those programs. They are not people who are looking necessarily for full-time employment, so that really works to our benefit. It is a double-edged sword, however, because those are the folks who also pick up the other jobs when they are open. So, you know, it's just sort of, the pool is, is pretty shallow and, and so, we want to make sure that we are doing what we can to, to fill those positions so that we don't have to worry about trying to double-dip with those, with the substitutes. And then, the last piece, and this is a little bit new for us. So, a couple of years around COVID, we decided to move the summer programming funding out of the regular budget, and we had been paying for our summer programming with various grants. We were able to put some of that into the ESAR grants. We were able to put some of that into a grant that the state of Maine offered, I think for two years, two summers now. That grant funding has gone away. So, we are going to be at a point where if we are going to continue to offer summer programming, we're going to have to look at how we would potentially fund that. Partnerships being leveraged at Russell School. Certainly, I work with Mrs. Hennessy and the staff at Memorial School as well as with Mr. Robbins at Dunn School. We have an active PTO. We work with the rec department. And a new one for us this year is the Grand Uglaster High School National Honor Society. So, we have implemented a program called Learning Buddies where high school students in the, the National Honor Society sign up for, during their study hall periods, to come on over to Russell School and to work in classrooms and help students. It has been a really, really fun and exciting opportunity for the students, but just for us to see how sort of the, the high school kids take the elementary kids under their wing. We also have been working with them when we have our large community events. These are the folks, these are the kids that are coming to do the face painting. There are the kiddos who are coming to run stations. They come with such big smiles and big hearts. It's really cool to see the way that they give back to, to our community. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Memorial School.
Thanks, Danny.
Thank you, Danny.
Hi, everybody. I'm a Maine Hennesee principal of Memorial School. I forewarn you that because we work so closely with Russell School, a lot of things are going to look familiar in this presentation. So, I'll try to speak to some different points about them, but excuse us for being a little bit redundant. It's on purpose because we try to make sure our two schools are pretty closely aligned in the work that we do so that when our students join together at Dunn School, they've had a similar experience at the two K to two schools. Over?
Yes.
Okay. So, recognition and celebration for Memorial School. We have fantastic, the best families at Memorial School, always willing to partner with us in many ways, in terms of volunteering, in terms of providing supplies, in terms of working with us on programming for classrooms or individual students. We really appreciate all the things that the Memorial families do for us. We're very fortunate to be in the community that we're in, so thank you very much to them. Also, the Memorial School staff is amazing. They're extremely adaptable. I mean, the last five years have thrown a lot at the Memorial School staff, and they come back, they're resilient, they're proactive, doing what's best for kids every day. So, so proud of my teachers and my staff at Memorial School. They are gems. A couple other things that we wanted to, to kind of celebrate this year. Plants and International provided a grant to get us a new sound system in the Memorial School gym. We just tested it today, and it looks great, so we're really excited about that. Sounds great. We're going to have a friendship dance in a couple of weeks, so we're going to kick the tires on that at our friendship dance and see how it goes. We have like portable mics, lapel mics, like very fancy, very few buttons to press to make it work, which is great because I can do it myself, so I'm glad about that. But, so that's been an awesome addition to the Memorial School gym. It's a, it's a pretty large space, and what we were using before wasn't necessarily always working that well. So, big thank you to Plants and International for that grant money. Also, like Danny mentioned, we had some pavement added to Memorial School this year. We were able to pave sort of the whole back section behind the school. And if you were on the facility tour, I mean, I was almost brought to tears showing you how exciting it is to have that tar in the back of the school. This time of year, last year, it would have been ruts and mud and slippery, and when they plowed, it pulled up all the, it was kind of a mess back there. It's perfect now, it looks great. Much safer for vehicles doing the loop at pickup time. It gave us a couple extra parking spots behind the school. So, very appreciative for that addition of the new pavement. And we are now fully paved in the entire loop, so very exciting. Almost as exciting as the fence. The fence was a little more exciting. But, very exciting. Last year's goals at Memorial School, just like Russell School, we have a literacy goal that we have every year. We're a Title I school, so we're actually obligated to have a literacy goal, but we would have one anyways because that's a very important part of what we do at Memorial. Last year, we were working on increasing the percentage of students who score at proficiency or above in reading from sixty-six to seventy-one percent as measured by that developmental reading assessment that Danny talked about. Didn't quite meet our goal, we got to sixty-eight percent, made some nice growth. But eighty-five percent of Memorial School students made a year's growth in reading, so. We also had a math goal last year. We implemented the Bridges Math Program, just like Russell, in tandem. And actually, we spent a lot of time in professional development with members from both staffs working together on that implementation. We were able to teach seven of the eight units last year. We also do the number corner, kind of other piece of the program that Danny mentioned. And in the spring of last year, eighty-four percent of Memorial School students were proficient or above on the NWEA mathematics assessment. So, it was really coming together for us. In the years prior, we had done some piloting of different math programs, so three teachers at a grade level might have been teaching three different programs. Before that, it was a little more wild, wild west in terms of the curriculum. So, this has really tied everything together, allowed us to talk about mathematics instruction every week in our, our professional learning communities with our grade levels and with our special educators, our RTI staff. So, it's really been a wonderful tool for us to kind of make sure that we're all growing in the same direction. And we've had some very nice results so far, so very excited about Bridges. I'm sure Jeff will talk about it in a few minutes, too. Because it's going to Dunn too now. Also, last year, we had a goal to expand family connections and partnerships to kind of build communication, understanding, support, engagement, and cater to education in New Gloucester. A big piece of that goal is working with the Gloucester Rec and the daycares in New Gloucester to make sure we are communicating, working together when it makes sense. We built some, silver lining from the pandemic. We built some nice communication during that time because there are, with the remote learning and things like that, we had to work together to make sure kids could have access to their schooling. But now, even though that, that phase is thankfully mostly over unless we have a storm day, we still have those nice communication ties to one another so we can make sure that we're supporting students in any way. So, like, for example, with the parent's permission, if a student was struggling at the rec program, they can give us a call, we could have a joint meeting, parent, rec, school, talk about what works at school, work together to help a student be successful across their day. So, that's really been a nice, nice tool for Memorial School and hopefully for our partners as well. We also host two big family events each year, a fall family night and a spring family night. And we boast about two-thirds of our families coming out to that event. So, it's a very exciting evening. There is some opportunity to do some sort of academic-y type activities, but there's also, we serve dinner, so families can sit together and eat together. Outdoor activities, the fire department brings some trucks for a touch of truck. Sometimes, we have a book fair, lots of things going on. Opportunity for families to get into the school, enjoy the school, mingle with staff, other families. Kids can mingle with each other. Definitely our favorite two days of the year at Memorial. We've had really nice attendance, so we're always looking to refine those evenings to get even more folks to come in and kind of appreciate what we're, what we're doing on those nights. But it's been going very well. Goal four is to ensure students feel welcome and included at school and are ready to learn as measured by our student survey data. A couple of years ago, we started doing a climate survey with K to two students, which had a learning curve. We had to figure out how to make that work, especially because the number of our kids can't read yet. But we were, ended up coming up with some very basic questions, and they kind of answer like smiley face, medium face, frowny face sort of thing. And so, we use that data to guide our work on this goal and look for the areas that we think would help students kind of increase the scores on the survey. And their highest area was a question, "My school has clear expectations", which was exciting to us because we worked very hard to make sure that students are safe, respectful, kind, and responsible every day. And the one area that they said had the lowest score was, "Students in my class follow the expectations, so teachers can teach", so we continue to refine that, making sure that we're providing support when needed and reteaching, that sort of thing, to help all students follow expectations. And on average, though, every area that we asked, they were agree to strongly agree. So, nice results on that student climate survey. So, this year's goals, like Danny's, very similar to last year's goals. You know, there are things like early literacy, where always we want to get the highest percentage possible. And actually, pre-pandemic, we sometimes were like eighty-eight, ninety percent proficient, so we're working towards building back to that goal. So, we have a literacy goal to increase proficient performance from sixty-eight percent to seventy-three as measured by our spring assessment. Hopefully, very optimistic to meet that goal this year. Our second goal has to do with mathematics. So, we want to continue to refine our assessment practices. Last year, we implemented the Bridges Program kind of from soup to nuts. This year, we need to figure out, how do we take the data that we gather from the program and look at it across grade levels, across the school? Do we kind of break it down by standard? Do we look at common scores on the entire assessment, all of those pieces? How do we graph them, and then how do we use that data to inform instruction? So, we will continue to work on that method. In the meantime, I'll, I'll tell you about NWEA scores so we can kind of keep some data on that as well. Our third goal has to do with expanding those family connections and partnerships. Some of the action steps that we're working on there that are sort of new this year, this one isn't new, but we're going to continue to look at student attendance data, like Danny spoke about for a while. We want to minimize the number of students who are chronically absent or at risk for that. Something new this year is we're going to conduct an interest survey of potential volunteers. I would say, since the pandemic, the number of volunteers at Memorial School has increased, but we'd like to see if there's other types of volunteer opportunities that work for our families so that folks can get involved as it fits into their very busy schedules. So, we're going to do a survey, probably go out maybe in a couple of weeks because we were just writing it as a school improvement team. And then, we'll build more volunteer opportunities aligned with that data. We also want to look at partnering more with local organizations for more experiential learning opportunities, so getting out into our community. We like, for example, we, we go to the wildlife park every spring with the second graders, maybe taking our first graders to pinesland farms, those sorts of things. So, being out in our community a little bit more now that we can. Yep, so those are important for goal three. Goal four has to do with making sure students feel welcome and included and are ready to learn. We'll continue that work with our guidance special, making sure that we're providing the instruction students need to, to feel safe and do well at school. We're always looking for new activities, school-wide events, those sorts of things to make kids really interested in coming to school. And then, we'll intervene in small groups or individually as needed as well. So, changes recommended to improve things at Memorial School look very similar to Russell School. We're going to be conducting that review of literacy in the coming years. I think about two-thirds of the Memorial School staff participated in that Letters training that Danny spoke of, so we want to make sure that we're taking our new learning, looking at curriculum materials, and evolving our literacy program to best meet the needs of students. We've had really good success so far, so we're excited to continue with that work. We also have quite a lengthy arrival, not as long as Russell. We start closer to about eight thirty-five, but last until about nine fifteen, which is a lot of time in the morning sort of in just arriving and getting settled. So, we'd like to look at, could we shrink that window down a little bit? I don't think Danny talked about this, but it, sometimes it's a little tricky to be the end of every bus route. So, any kind of delay that happens at the other schools throughout a day's transportation impacts us a little bit more than the rest. So, I think that's why our windows are as large as they were. I would say the buses are arriving more consistently within a smaller window, so next year's times may be able to tighten up on that a little bit. In the afternoon, it's about twenty minutes for us, like Russell. It's tricky because we do have a lot of parent pickups, so that takes time to make sure we're safely loading kiddos in their car. And our buses come across maybe fifteen minutes or so as they come down from Dunn. So, if we could shave a few more minutes off of that and have a little more instructional time, we would love it. But I think the morning might be the more ripe opportunity to kind of shorten that amount of time. Memorial School Library, mentioned this to you, to you on the tour. The furniture is showing some signs of wear. Some of the bookshelves, we've had to do a lot of reinforcement because we'll come in and they'll be like, the shelves will be on the ground, you know, that sort of thing. They've been in there for quite a while. The tricky part is, is doing any side of, sort of work like that, the Memorial School Library is going to be a larger project than just buying a new bookshelf. So, it's in the capital plan eventually to look at replacing the flooring and then looking at kind of new furniture for the library. So, just keeping that on the radar, I don't think that's a next-year goal, but just want to make sure that's something we're thinking about in, in the short term to look at some upgrades to the Memorial School Library. What requires attention, again, same as Danny's. Looking for those high-quality substitute teachers and substitute ed techs. I, I would say there were days last week where I might have had as many as five or six unfilled positions in a day. Like the sickness that's affected the kids, it's also affected the staff to a degree. So, working to make sure that we have folks that are looking for those jobs and picking them up and working at Memorial School regularly enough to kind of know our routines and how things work. Really helpful to have return substitutes. We're always looking to enhance that response to intervention system to best meet the needs of our learners. Like Danny said, that's a goal that I think will be on our, our list forever because we're always going to look for what works best to help kids read and improve in their math skills. Working to attract and retain high-quality staff, especially in support staff positions. I think we have three vacancies right now. I don't think we've been fully staffed in support staff for a number of years, so filling those positions will be super helpful. The last couple of years, we've had some of the ed tech interns working at Memorial School, which has been a big help with those open positions. But I think some of them are almost done, so it'll be, this need for folks in those positions on a regular basis will be a little more acute come next year. And then, at Memorial School, our summer programs have been grant-funded for quite a while because they were funded by Title I and then more recently by ESAR and by the, the grants that were kind of designed for summer instruction. So, without grant funding available, that's going to be really challenging to continue with that programming. We've had as many as like eighty students in the summer and many staff. We haven't really had a challenge staffing that program at Memorial. I have a lot of staff who look forward to working in the summer program and working with our students year-round, but this, the funding for the program's going to be an issue this year, so. Which we'll have to figure out in the budget process, but. Partnerships being leveraged at Memorial School, working with the New Gloucester Rec and our daycares in the area for the benefit of students and families. We love working with Russell School. I don't think Danny mentioned this, our teacher leadership team meets together once a month, so we make sure we have a joint meeting. And whenever we have full, full PD days, we work together as, as two schools together so that we can make sure that we're all, we're moving in the same direction, consulting with one another. Consulting with one another, learning from one another um at Russell and Memorial. We enjoy working with Dunn School, both with onboarding our future kindergarteners and sending off our future third graders, um that'll be coming up soon. Uh, we are lucky to have two groups of high school volunteers at Memorial School. Uh, both the National Honor Society students come over and do some work just like Danny described. But the Excel program also does a lot of work at Memorial School from helping at our family nights. And they also uh work with one of my second grade classrooms on a big gardening project. So if you've driven by, there's some raised beds in the courtyard, they helped build those and uh put those up with the second graders, so. Uh, we're very appreciative to both of those groups. Uh, and then we really like working with our Memorial School and district-wide teacher parents. They're great partners, both in terms of providing funding uh for things like author visits or special events or field trips. Uh, but they also provide a lot of nice family engagement um for the families of Memorial School, so we appreciate um them working with us as well. And Mr. Robbins, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, good evening, I'm Jeff Robbins, principal of the Dunn School. Um, so recognition and celebration, uh the Planton International, uh as I think Amanda spoke to, uh provided a grant that um. Uh, originally, we're going to use, it was meant for uh fine arts. Um, and we had discussed uh building um an amphitheater over on the Dunn School property that could be accessed by both. Uh, Memorial and uh ourselves. Um, but uh with the costs uh associated with materials and the site work that was going to need to be done, the grant wouldn't have covered it. Um, so we kind of switched and um we have been able to order a new sound system for the Dunn School gym. Uh, which is desperately needed, uh that is uh almost fully installed. We have to get a special lift to put the box in up over the stage, um so we're waiting for that. Um, and we uh recently uh decided to purchase a retractable screen as part of that. So we'll now have a a screen instead of fishing with a hook to bring our current screen down, which is uh not a lot of fun. We will have that and um and Planton had also done some work around um safety in New Gloucester. Uh, with especially speeds around uh the Dunn School. They had um held a meeting with uh the town council in New Gloucester to talk about that and their concerns. And so they had designated some of the money from that grant to uh increase safety um signage around Dunn School. So we have purchased, they are on-site, uh flashing school zone signs for Dunn School that we will have one on either end of the property. Um, we just have to, it's been difficult to get the uh poles that we need to mount everything and then get it set up. Uh, we will uh eventually get that done in the spring and so um that will be a big help as well. So they they have been great, uh Planton has really done a lot for us. Um, Dunn School staff has been working extremely hard to implement the Bridges math program. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that uh as we go through goals, so I'll move past that for now. Uh, as well as uh we have been working and participating in restorative practice training. Um, with the main school safety center and I will talk about that a little bit more in a in a moment. So uh both of those things have been a lot of work for the staff, uh and they've really dug in and done a nice job um with those trainings. Um, so results of last year's school go uh last year's goals, pre-k staff successfully built protocols and procedures. Um, for planning and implementing instruction for our students who uh need remediation or special education services at the pre-k level. Um, they wrote a book, uh Building Blocks for Enhancing um uh Teaching for Preschoolers with Special Needs. They took a lot of those protocols um and developed what worked for them from that. Uh, so that as a team, because our pre-k program has, as it's developed over the years, has now includes an interventionist. It includes a special education teacher, it includes two special education ed techs. Uh, as well as speech and OT and those things. So coming up with comprehensive plans in addition to a regular IEP. Because there's so many people involved with those kiddos, um has really helped to make sure that we're efficient, that we our kids are getting exactly what they need. Um, and that as a team, they can really plan that out because we only have those kids for two and a half hours a day. So um building all those services in that those particular kiddos need uh can be tricky in a two and a half hour period. So the more efficient we are with that, the better protocol systems we have, uh the more successful we'll be in in providing those services. Um, and we operate with IEPs that we don't even own, they belong to CDS, so there's another piece to the puzzle. Um, uh, last year's goals, third and fourth grade staff participate in professional development for reading. Um, we've uh not had a common resource for reading in a number of years. Uh, so we looked at different um uh different materials that we could use to bring in. We still do not have or use a literacy program, but what we did decide to do is purchase a school-wide library. Um, that's uh teachers, uh it's a leveled library, teachers can um access, that has multiple copies of every text that is in the library. So they pull those out, they can work uh with small groups of kids uh at the appropriate level. Um, from that reading library and then put it in and it comes with a lot of um teaching um opportunities, a lot of um. Pre-planned things as well as um activities, vocabulary, all of that kind of stuff. So we did purchase that scholastic library, uh and teachers have really utilized that well this year. Also last year, um and actually over a two-year period, we were piloting math programs. Because the math program we were using, my math, was being discontinued, I know we've talked about that in the past. So we looked at two different math programs, the Reveal Math Program as well as Bridges. Bridges was already in use at uh the K to two level. And um after going through a year-long pilot, uh we had a couple of groups of staff doing um each of the two programs. Um, we came to the decision to adopt Bridges Math, um which uh has been great so far and I'll talk a little bit more about that for this year's goals. So in this year's goals, um again, we have been working with the main school safety center on um implementing restorative practices. And uh this is a grant-funded program um that really for us has been a continuation of our multi-tiered system of supports for behavior. We did that, uh we've been working on that for several years, putting in those um standard operating procedures. As well as um implicitly teaching behavior in different areas of the building, those types of things. So restorative practice really became the next step for us with that. Um, and in doing that, uh the main school safety center uh provided onsite training or on early release from September. And we just finished with them uh in terms of onsite training uh at this last early release. We also have an implementation team that was um trained last uh June uh to help with that. So staff, five staff members, four teachers and myself, um were involved in that training. Uh, and all of our staff, whether it be teachers or ed techs, have been uh taking a course through Eastern Maine Community College as part of this program. It's an online nine-module uh course. And uh and then the main school safety center would come in after each of those um sessions and talk about and enhance that learning that we've been doing online. Staff actually get credit for that um towards their recertification, whether they're uh support staff or teachers. So that has been very successful. And what we're seeing is um that we are able to build classroom communities and school communities based on this work. That um really uh enhance kind of what we're looking for in a school. Um, in in terms of how we treat each other, how we work together, how we communicate. And then the other piece to that is when something does go wrong, how do we react? And how do we restore kind of the relationships that we've built um through uh restorative conversations? And um a particular line of of questioning a- as well as um interacting. So it might be that two students are having a struggle, they would sit down with a staff member or myself. And we would kind of walk through a protocol of restoring that and repairing that relationship. Um, so that we can move forward and be good classmates and peers. Um, so so far this year, uh I think that's been very successful and I think it has really helped augment the work we did through M T S S B. Uh, and then the other goal for this year is the actually implement the Bridges Math Program and and as Danny and Amanda have spoken about. Um, Bridges is a heavy lift uh in terms of implementing the program. There's a lot of uh prep work for staff, there's a lot of materials that not only come with the program, but also that they have to create. Um, and at the same time, they're learning the program as they're implementing it and planning it and and teaching it. So um it has been a a lot of work. We meet uh regularly in our uh PLC groups to talk about how the instruction's going, to give each other uh ideas and tips. And uh support each other in this implementation. Um, but the overall uh opinion of staff is that is it is an excellent program. They see things from our kids in terms of math conversation and discussions that maybe they hadn't seen before uh with some other programs. Uh, and kids can really talk about math uh and explain their thinking and manipulate numbers in a mental math way that we haven't done before. So continuing to um do that through the rest of the year and and onwards. And look forward to how that's going to impact uh how our students are doing in math and and their learning in math. Uh, changes that are recommended to improve, again, the school-wide implementation of restorative practices. Uh, will just augment the work we've been doing in M T S S B, so we're looking to continue that. And that's really even after, at the conclusion of the year, we will not be fully implemented. The main school safety center says that's about a three to five-year process. So we'll continue to work uh on that as a school, even without the necessary necessarily the support of the safety center. Um, but we will come together uh for discussions with that through PLCs and other work that we do over the over the coming years. And really develop that as part of our culture. Uh, and then other changes, continue to fund capital project lines of the budget to fund facility maintenance and upgrades. Think this is an important piece, we did a lot of work this year at the Dunn School and around the district in terms of paving and tile replacement. And um uh did some siding work and and things like that. Um, but there's only so much in the in the facility capital budget uh lines to support that work throughout the district. And I think um having been uh kind of intimately involved in that over the last two years. Uh, I see it as an area that we need to um kind of move back to the funding level that we had a year ago. Um, because there's just too many things that we need to do in the district and and um that that need to be done to keep up our facility, so. Uh, what requires attention, class sizes are approximately twenty-three or so uh at Dunn School for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, that is fairly large, kind of the upper echelon of where we would want to be. Uh, the Dunn School, for those who may not know the history, was fifteen classroom teachers for a lot of years, even when we were just third and fourth grade. Um, we have reduced that to twelve over the years. And our numbers have, we've we've just, you know, kind of had some bubble years or two-year periods where uh we've had twenty-one, twenty-two in a classroom. Um, we are right now between twenty-one and twenty-four in a room. Um, we just just uh coming out of the break had four enrollments. Um, and so, you know, I think uh going into the the fiscal year twenty-six, we can maintain where we are. But if the bubbles continue to come, or if the numbers go up, uh in future years, we're going to have to look at uh possibly putting back. Uh, one of those, at least one of those teachers to bring the sizes down. Um, attract and retain high-quality substitutes, you've heard that already, uh substitutes are always an issue. We do have staff at Dunn School that we pull from to cover classrooms. Uh, and when we do that, they're generally um our intervention ed techs. They are placed on teams, on three-person teaching teams, so they know those kids intimately because they're on the team with them all day. So they can step in seamlessly, but it does take away from the work they're actually there to do. And then uh again, continue the facility upgrades and I listed some of the things I just talked about. Our partnerships, the main school safety center has been an excellent partnership. Um, and again, that was grant-funded, uh Stacy Barlow has put together a pro uh uh team at uh the state level. Uh, that is doing this work throughout, you're going to hear about this, I'm pretty sure, again with the middle school, because they also are involved in this work. Uh, we trained our implementation teams together. Uh, and that will be a nice um flow from Dunn School to the middle school in terms of that work. Uh, so I'm looking forward to, you know, when our kids go to the middle school, they'll already be have been involved in some of this and and understand. Not only um, you know, kind of the language that we use, but also just the relationship building that goes on in our classrooms and our school community. Uh, Child Development Services continues to be an important partner with our pre-k program. Um, that may become even more of a partnership when we start taking on three-year-olds. Um, but you know, I I think um their uh funding of a number of our special education positions for pre-k has been excellent. It has helped us uh to really offer a comprehensive program at that level from intervention to special education. Uh, and everything in between um for those kids, and I think it has helped them really launch their school careers. Um, the Gray and Gloucester Recreation Departments continue to be an important um partnership. And again, New Gloucester Rec uh hold uh hosts or has their program at our building. So that's been fantastic, they have a morning uh program and afternoon program. And they also run their entire summer program out of the Dunn School and that's been um, that's been an excellent partnership. Planton International, as I had uh spoken about before, uh Russell School, Memorial School and uh Gray and Gloucester Middle School. Uh, every student in our building is in transition, uh pre-k kids are coming and going. Uh, so they're coming in, but they're going to either Russell or Memorial. Um, and our third graders are coming in from Russell or Memorial, and our fourth graders are going out to the middle school. So every year is a transition year at Dunn. Those partnerships are vital to making sure that our kids have a successful time. Uh, in the one-year period for pre-k and the two-year period for third and fourth grade. And without those partnerships, uh we would not be as successful as we are with those, that number of kids in transition. All right, encore presentation from Mrs. Hennessy.
Thank you, Jeff.
My best speaking on hour thirteen. Um, thanks, Jeff, for that shout-out too, yeah, we really love working with you too at Memorial School. Um, so I also, it's my part-time job, is the um administrator for Gifted and Talented. And uh some exciting things are happening in Gifted and Talented. Now, we only report to you once every three years, we're on sort of that cycle, so it's been a few years, uh but this is a good year to come. Because for the first time in as long as I can remember, we're fully staffed. So that has been fantastic. Um, last year, um graciously, I helped to include our numbers to be two full-time teachers across the district. Uh, so we have a teacher that focuses more on sort of the math and science and one that does the literacy and the social studies. They spend the vast majority of their time between Dunn School and the middle school, uh working with students every day. And it has just been wonderful to be able to provide uh the service to the students who uh were identified in the past or became identified for Gifted and Talented this year. So very exciting. Uh, and because we have capacity this year, we've been able to document and standardize a lot of our processes, which uh sort of evolved over time. Um, as our staffing, it changed annually and uh we tried to catch our footing, um and all of those sorts of things. So we've been able to really kind of put to paper the processes that we use. We haven't changed an awful lot, but we've solidified it and we've written it down, um standardized it. And now we're able to share that information with the staffs at the schools too, so that's been very exciting. Um, both of the teachers that, uh we ended up with two new teachers this year. Uh, both of them came from the regular education realm, so that's been really helpful too, because they have expertise um on the curriculum taught. Um, both at Dunn School and the middle school, one came from each school, uh and so they're able to bring that to the table, which has been super helpful. And they're very innovative and um very much go-getters, so they've been fantastic to work with this year. Uh, in terms of last year's goals, uh one thing that we were working on was refining and maintaining individualized learning plans for each identified student in Gifted and Talented. We were able to do that last year, um but we are sort of evolving the formatting of that this year with the addition of the the new staff. Um, so that's been exciting for us to have a place to keep sort of all the data we need, all of the information that's helpful from year to year. Uh, as we continue to work with our identified students. We, last year, we worked to create a system to provide teacher of record service in math and ELA in grades three through eight. So essentially, what that means is if a student is identified for Gifted and Talented in math or in ELA, the Gifted and Talented teacher is their math teacher. So it's not a once-a-week type of thing. They're seeing that student every single day for their math instruction. They give them their assessments. They would do their report cards, those sorts of things. So they're having their math instruction in the same place every day. Instead of, kind of an older model might have been like on Fridays. You might, you know, go to a different classroom, which has been really exciting for us and given us lots of opportunities to consult with regular ed, make sure we're consistent, and really build the rigor for the students who are involved in Gifted and Talented. Also means they don't do a lot of duplication of effort. It's kind of tricky when you have two different math teachers, right, to ensure that, first of all, we're covering everything that needs to be covered, but then to make sure it's not redundant or they didn't have twice as much work. Like sometimes that was sort of an unfortunate consequence of the old model. This way, the GT teachers are responsible for that instruction every day. And we can make sure that kids are working to their fullest potential. So that's been really exciting for GT. We also had hoped last year to work on reinvigorating Gifted and Talented offerings in grades three through eight for students in the visual and performing arts. I didn't get to that last year. We were kind of treading water a little bit, being half-staffed. So we're going to work on that this year. There was still a little bit of programming available at the middle school level, especially in the visual arts last year. But we're going to work on that this year and make sure we have some opportunities for students who may, you know, want to work in the visual and performing arts areas. All right, so this year's goals. Our first goal is develop and implement a tiered GT service model aligned with the multi-tiered systems of support system. So what that means is, for tier one, we're going to look at providing some programming, some consultation, some assistance for any students who are in our mainstream regular ed classroom who may need a little bit more challenge. So any student that a teacher identifies or a student self-identifies as needing a little bit of a push, a little bit extra, will be able to provide consultation, resources, those sorts of things to support the teachers in those classrooms. So that'll be our tier one. Our tier two is looking for those students who are performing typically like in the 90th percentile or above on assessments and providing for them what we call our math club, our ELA club. So they're able to come out once a week, work with the Gifted and Talented teachers, have some enrichment, have some rigor, pick some passion projects to work on, that sort of thing. So they're having some programming with other students of kind of similar aptitude. So that's exciting for us. We have the capacity to do that this year, which we haven't for the last few years. And then our tier three services are for those students who are fully identified in Gifted and Talented, 95th percentile typically achievers on different assessments that we use, cognitive and academic. And those students are in that like everyday course for math or everyday course for ELA in grades three through eight. So we're working on working out the system. How does the schedule work? How does my staffing capacity work? And then we're also building in some work in social studies and science along that same line. So pretty exciting for us. We're continuing to look at aligning and integrating Gifted and Talented curriculum across the subject areas, making sure we have rigor and depth for students and meeting their diverse needs. Every Gifted and Talented identified student is not identical. So making sure that we're meeting them where they at, where they're at, and giving them what they need to accomplish their next step. Interdisciplinary opportunities are on the docket for us as well. And advanced learning opportunities on specialized content as well, especially for those tier three learners. Our goal three has to do with building staff capacity and fostering collaborations to support GT. I would say in our understaffed years, which is like nine of the last 10 years, it's been hard for us to provide a lot of professional development to staffs just because of, you know, capacity for the teachers to get out and do that. I can often do it because I'm usually providing professional development for the Memorial School staff at the same time. But now that we have these teachers on board, we are working to get out to the schools and provide information to teachers and staffs about what we're offering, how it works, what our systems are, so that they have an understanding of how it kind of works behind the curtain. And then, and then on top of that, improving communication with our families and other stakeholders as well. So that's a big goal for us this year. And then we're going to work on reinvigorating that Gifted and Talented and the arts work. Hopefully have that ready to roll for next fall. Already started having some discussions with Jeff and with Rick at the middle school about how we might make that work. So what changes are recommended? I'd really love to retain our trained staff in Gifted and Talented so that we could work on these goals and really dig in deep rather than sort of, you know, patching the holes as we work through the year. So that's exciting. Both of the GT staff are currently taking some coursework in Gifted and Talented as well. So they're bringing their new learning strategies, things that they're picking up so that we continue to evolve what we're offering. We are identifying some instructional materials that are needed in grades three through eight. So you may see us asking for a little bit of an increase in books or supplies. We're using what we can that already exists within the schools. But sometimes, for example, like my ELA teacher might need a new set of novels to work on a unit, things like that. So I don't think it's going to be a big ask, but there may be some materials asks that we haven't had in the past. And what requires attention? Retaining GT staff to ensure continuity of programming and then providing that professional development for the staffs at each of the schools. And our partnerships is sort of everyone. We work with the staffs at all the schools and the admins at all the schools, work with the students and the families. So just finding our little niche and working within each school to provide what we need for the, for the students who are identified and the students in our, in our clubs and then any student that could benefit from our consultation. I think that's that.
I just wanted to throw in a couple extra points. I didn't want to interrupt anybody, but a couple of things I thought about I wanted to add in. One is a big shout-out to our administration at the two schools for flexing with it and Amanda flexing with GT. The two teachers that we brought on so that we are now fully staffed in GT were both Gray and Gloucester classroom teachers. So they knew the district, they knew the kids, they knew the systems, and they were able to really hit the ground running. And that was a huge benefit for us. And it took, we stole one from Mr. Robbins and we stole one from the middle school as well. And both administrators just really worked with Amanda to make sure that that would work in a way that was best for kids. So we're really appreciative of that. The other thing, I wanted to speak on behalf of Mr. Robbins because he will never bring it up, but I will. When we talk about the, the needs around high-quality substitutes, I just want to note for the board that in the budget process of last year, Jeff was really thoughtful in his asks. And while the other four buildings did include permanent subs in their budgets and were granted that, Dunn School did not have that in their budget and was not awarded that. So as we move into the budget process and think about the, how we staff subbing, I think something we need to have an eye to is equity around four buildings that have that kind of position when a fifth building does not and whether that is really what we should be moving forward. He would never bring it up, but I will. And then the third is just to kind of, just touch on something that Jeff touched on around child development services. I know we've sort of mentioned it to you over the years, but the plan is starting to solidify and become clear that we are going to be responsible for child find, which means finding all students that might need specialized instructions or support. In the coming years, we are going to be responsible for four-year-olds and three-year-olds. And potentially, I found out yesterday, maybe kids ages 2.3 and up in a way. Good times. So, and that is because Child Development Services or CDS is the organization in the state that currently does that. The state is doing away with that organization and instead shifting the responsibility to the local SAUs. So we're still at local school districts or school administrative units. So we are actually in really great shape compared to a lot of folks in the state because we do have a very active pre-K program that serves a big chunk of our population. And Jeff and his team at Dunn School and our special services team have been really ahead of the curve, working with CBS so that we currently do take on those kiddos who need specialized instruction or need IEPs, need evaluations, who are in our pre-K program. So that is a big chunk of the four-year-olds that we already have some systems in place to support. So when we're thinking about how we attack this, it's the kids who aren't in our programs at four and then the three-year-olds who are out in the community. We are actively working with the Greater Sevago Education Alliance. I was actually in Kittery yesterday with that team of people. They're what's known as early adopters, people who took on three and four-year-olds from the state before they had to. So that they could, and so we were down there just learning about what they've learned and, and, you know, their do's and don'ts and how that's all working. And we're circling back as an alliance to talk about how we can pool our resources and pool, you know, our services so that maybe we can work together to address some of these challenges of taking on responsibility for three and four-year-olds. So you're going to be hearing much more about that in the coming years. But it's a big one coming down the pike. All right. Shaw, how do you want to?
Do we want to go school by school or we want to just?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we circle back to Russell and start there and work through?
Well, we said Russell. I have a couple of questions, but I'll open it to others first. See if you guys have any questions for Danny. If it's, if it's a real in-depth thing that he's not going to have an answer for tonight, like Candace said, we'll get an answer and bring it back.
I'm prepared to write them down.
There we go, and she's ready to type. Jim?
Well, I, I wrote this down during your presentation, but if really all three of you, it could be applicable to is, you mentioned attendance. What measures, I don't recall you being specific on what measures you're employing to try to improve attendance. And also, what were the pre-COVID percentages? Because that helps put those two numbers, you gave us some context.
Excuse me. Pre-COVID, our chronic absentee rate was 5%. That skyrocketed to about 30% during COVID. And now we are down to just about 15%. The measures that we are putting in place, we use strategies from a program called Count Me In. That is, it was a nonprofit for a little bit, grant-funded, I think, through the federal government. We continue to employ the strategies. Usually for us at elementary school, it's a lot of strategy around building relationships with families. One of the particular challenges at K-2, I think, is that chronic absenteeism isn't always a problem with students. It's often the big people in the students' lives. And so we try to partner with those families to give them some strategies to help get their kids here. We also do different things. We do something called nudge letters. So, you know, each trimester, we try to push out letters to just let them know, you know, that at this point, their kiddo is chronically absent. The nice thing about chronic absenteeism is that if we catch it early, we can have a positive impact on it because it's 10% of the school year. You know, that number is a little bit different now than it's going to be in, in June. What we know is that 17 absences gets to that 10%. So if we can try to intervene earlier, we, we do that. We also try to implement strategies where teachers are reaching out to families when students are absent. We try to do that in a timely manner so that we can, you know, let families know that their kiddo wasn't here today and we missed them or share some of the cool things that happened. If there are particular challenges with individual students, so let's say they struggle to be motivated to come to school, we might do some tier-two intervention with our guidance counselor. If they are pretty pervasive, then we might bump that up to a tier-three support and involve our social worker. At that point, you know, the social worker is working with the child and with the family to try to motivate them to come. And then we, we try not to use incentives because at our level, it is outside of the control of the child most of the time. If it's a, you know, if the parent can't get the kiddo to the bus stop and they don't have reliable transportation, you know, trying to incentivize, that doesn't feel really good. But there are some kids who are motivated by incentives. And if that helps us to get them in the door, sometimes we might implement a strategy like that.
Does the problems we've had with buses play any role, you think?
I would say no, not that I am aware of. We, we have not had, we have not problem-solved a transportation-related absentee problem.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you find, on the same topic, do you find that, you may not have hard evidence for this, but do you find that the issues that are keeping you at that 15% number have very little to do with student ability once they get there? That it's this whole range of largely family-related things that are preventing them, like you said, miss the bus, don't have transportation, whatever those reasons are. Is that what you're finding? I'm just wondering if there's a trend or anything that we could address? If there's something specifically to be addressed to bump that to the next step?
I would say that we don't have overarching trends other than trying to build those positive relationships with, with schools. What we find sometimes is that we might have a particular, particular families that don't buy into, to school. And so for us, that might be a trend that we really focus on showing families what school is, showing families that school is fun and engaging, and trying to utilize some of the technology to, you know, to show those families that when those kiddos are here, they're having a good time. Like here's a snap on seesaw of, you know, this kid playing, you know, with another child, you know, during free play. Or here's this kiddo engaging in a fun math activity during workstation time. Outside of that, I think we use our RTI tier-two team to problem-solve on a more individualized basis.
Just seems that at a 15% number, even as much better as that sounds than it has been. That's still an awful lot of energy and time.
I would agree.
Spent by staff.
Yeah.
That isn't educational.
I would agree. I think a big, I guess another trend is really post-COVID. You know, every time you have a sniffle, you don't have to stay home. You know, and I think during that unprecedented time, you know, if you had a sniffle, then you did stay home. You know, we became really conscious of every time we were not feeling 100%.
We trained them very well.
I think another trend that we have talked about, and I don't have any hard evidence for this, but I, I sort of see this interesting thing playing out. Post-pandemic, we have a lot of families who now work from home. And so, you know, I think before, you know, unless you were vomiting, I won't go through the list, but when you had to stay home, you stayed home. I think now families have a little more flexibility and a little more leeway with, with kiddos staying home. I can work in my office downstairs and they can sort of be not feeling well upstairs and it's not going to impact either one of us. I think for those, some, some families, and I think it's a small fraction, but I, I think it's a little easier for that to happen.
I think to speak to Danny's point, too, about like some families don't buy into school, I think that's the case. And then I think there's sort of this dynamic we see sometimes, particularly prior to getting to high school, where there's an attitude that missing school isn't a big deal. And, and maybe it wasn't a day at a time or two days at a time, but, but helping families see that that adds up. We have lots of families who do pull their kids from school to go on family vacations. We encourage people to spend times together as a family. That's really important. But when you pull them for five days for that and then they come back and they're sick and they miss another three days and then a couple of weeks later, something happens in the family, you miss three more, that really starts to add up. And, and I think what I try to stress with people is, you know, we have a limited number of days with these kids and we need them every day. We can get them if we want to help them to achieve what we want them all to achieve. So we're trying to sort of help, we don't want to make families feel bad about any of those things. It's a fine balance. We want to build those relationships, but really trying to get that message out that every day at school is really important and, and we want your kid with us every day that they can be there.
I think we try to do, you know, another strategy is sort of the passive information campaign, you know, to that point exactly, you know. Only a couple, missing a couple of days a month really does add up over the school year. But it is that fine line because we don't want to come in hot and then, you know, turn people away. And, and we want families to be in charge of making those decisions for themselves. You, as a parent, me as a parent, I want to make that decision when my kiddo is too sick to come to school. And so just sort of trying to find that balance is, is really hard.
Fran?
Oh, thanks. Pretty much on that same vein, the family leave program. Can you tell yet how much, because it's so new and you can't tell how much that has an impact on the school district right now?
The family leave program won't be implemented for a couple more years.
A couple more years? Oh, I thought it was next year, but, okay. But again, that's something, too, I wonder how that's going to impact, you know. the number of teachers that need, will be absent as well as, you know, the number of students that would be absent. Are we looking into any of that to see how we can counter any of that except hiring more people? I mean, to substitute for those people that won't be there. And, you know, this whole absenteeism, it's not just in the school district. You know, at work, you know, the same habit is developed now into the industry and, and business. And, you know, people don't feel like coming in, they don't come in. And, I mean, I've talked to a lot of managers and it's very difficult to, you know, so this is not just school districts, they've been trained enough for the absenteeism. And now it's going out into the mainstream businesses and seeing that it's an okay thing, I guess. But, all right, that.
Yeah, we can come back and talk more about family leave and as the rules are, because the rules are still being made right now. So as we learn more about those rules, I'm sure we'll be circling back with you with more information fairly often.
Sam?
Thanks. Danny, I've got a good amount of experience on the board, I know most of the lingo, but this is one that would be helpful for me. On the goal around implementation of tier-two strategies for PBIS, right? It says, increase implementation of tier-two strategies from 31% to 58%. How do you measure implementation of those strategies? Does that mean like you know you would like to do it, but you don't have the resources? It doesn't mean you don't have the time in the day? Like what is, what are the limiters and how do you measure like 31 to 58%? Like, what is the, what is the denominator in the, you know?
Sure. So we use a tool called the Tiered Fidelity Inventory. And that is an assessment that measures the different components of PBIS at tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three. So the way that we get to those, that raw data score is we have a PBIS, we call it the MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Supports, team. And each year, we spend a fair amount of time inventorying each of those components to see, auditing, I guess, each of those components to see what we have implemented. And at the end, we enter all of that, that raw data and it pops out with an overall percentage.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. And as far as how we get from one point to the next, that team will spend some time looking at sort of where our challenges are, where we're not scoring too highly, and, and try to make some good guesses on where it would be appropriate for us to spend time. I will say, one of the things is that when we look at, at some of those components, for, I'll go up to tier-one, just because we're pretty well on our way in that tier. I do not anticipate honestly ever reaching 100% because there are parts of it that our team has just said, it's not worth our, it is a lot of input for very little result. That is not a good use of our time. But we are constantly checking in annually to, to see if we are making those gains.
What would be an example of a like tier-two intervention that like you want to be able to do, but you haven't been able to do?
So, that's, a lot of tier-two has to do with the actual tier-two team and identifying the, getting the right people to the table. And so that's really where we have spent a lot of our time is, is getting the right people to the table.
So it's like a person-hours thing? Like the person is literally not available to have this meeting?
Yes. And then we're sort of, the actual strategy is that we are implementing, again, because we're looking at a more targeted population, it, we are implementing things like a program called Check-In/Check-Out. That's an opportunity to sort of track over the day how students are doing behaviorally. We're doing a, a strategy called Breaks Are Better. That's an opportunity, like when things are getting tough and students are starting to become a little revved up and becoming a little dysregulated, we can take a break and do something productive. And so as far as like the actual strategies, I, I feel like we have what we need in, in that area. What we really need to do is look at what we are doing and document everything. So much of, of the process is that actual documentation so that our staff can pick up a handbook and say, okay, I'm having this problem, here's how I solve that. So I guess our biggest problem would be manpower hours and time, time in the day.
Right, and that's affected by we don't have enough ed tags or that.
Yeah.
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 Okay, that makes sense, thanks.
Good question, yeah.
Somebody else? Ms. Steve?
I know with the new math program, the Bridges, two of, two of you had mentioned that you weren't able to successfully get through all of the units that you were, either you were supposed to. Is that something that you're finishing up? I don't know, because I don't know the program and I don't know how it all works, but something that you're going to aim for, was that just a, you're finishing out the school to get to the eight units? So you will get there?
Yeah, and so I, and I don't want to speak for these two, but I, but I.
But there you are.
One of the things, I don't know that we ever open a program and teach it cover to cover, right?
Because it's new and there's a learning curve and?
Yes. And so like what we are trying to do is to figure out, you know, pacing and figure out assessment. And what, at Russell School, what we decided was instead of trying to plow through all of it and, you know, just sort of do it at a cursory level, let's make sure we slow down and do it at a level where our kids are retaining that information. I think our hope would be, you know, that yes, we do get through all eight units. And if we look at the scope and sequence of the program, it is designed for 170 days. So yes, if we came in and every day taught the day that we were supposed to, we, we could. I'm not certain that's best practice. We just don't know, we don't have enough familiarity with the program yet to say like, here's what we can cut out. Or we know that this is going to come up later. What we also recognize is that we can't just cut off two units at the end every year, right? And so what we're trying to do is to say like, okay, what parts of those can we do? And I think it's unit eight maybe is mostly review. You know, so again, we sort of gave ourselves a little bit of grace to say, you know what? If we teach it well the first time, then we probably don't need to, to spend as much time on it in unit eight. But those are things I think that will come, you know, with implementation. I feel successful, you know, six out of eight units in the first year of a pilot is really good. Implementation science would tell us three to five years to really have the whole thing under our belt. So I think for now, we're, excuse me, in an okay place.
The other, is okay if I? The other great thing I, I'm glad that you brought up was the, the summer programs and losing funding for that. Because I know my kids, and I'm sure I could speak for many families, that say that that program is phenomenal. Having that lapse of time where the kids aren't getting any learning or any, you know, any of that. They need it so much, that time off is so detrimental to them that they lose so much. So I think it's really important that we try to figure out how we can make that happen and keep that in our schools because I think it's really, really important.
On that same thing, Danny, you're the first one up, so get the answer.
I know.
Probably tried to solve.
Come on up, Chad.
Can I just speak to that real quick?
Yeah.
Funding is not the only problem with that. Staffing is a huge problem. And the reason for that is our staff are going, the accelerator is all the way to the mat all year long with everything we're asking them to do. That when they get to the summer, it is very difficult to find people to step into those roles because that's the time that they have generally, over, in years past, stepped away. So like Russell and Memorial both offered it last year, Dunn did not. It was not a funding problem, it was a staffing problem. We did not have the staff and the people who were, who were will, not willing, who had the energy and the, and the capacity to do that for another five weeks in the summer. And last year was a particularly condensed summer anyway, we got out late and started earlier. It wasn't possible. So we could have had all the funding in the world, it probably wasn't going to happen at Dunn anyway. So, and I know that that's why the middle school has not had it a number of years as well. So I just wanted to clarify.
We also reduced programming at K-2 last summer. We have traditionally invited our incoming kindergarteners to join us for summer. Again, because we were not able to staff adequately, we focused on our rising first and second graders instead. So significantly, so we've been reducing our program significantly over time, funding has not been the reason.
Danny, could you very briefly, for people in the community who may not know what's offered in the summer, just generally describe what it is we're talking about?
Yeah, we have, we've offered a number of different things. I would say that our latest iteration of summer program included some academic work to include math and literacy. And then we would bring in some additional programming, maybe around the, at Russell School, we had some programming around arts. So we had an art teacher who was there and kids got to do art every day. And we also had a, we did a theater component at Russell School. I know Memorial School has had STEM option, PE. It is a little bit based on the staff that we get and we want staff to be able to, to come in and to do some of those pieces too. But trying to marry those two pieces together, make it engaging, make it not feel like summer school, you know, and, and have more of a camp vibe to it.
The other thing that has changed over time, when I first came on board in the district, our summer programs are very targeted. We were looking for students who usually had a response intervention plan. They were maybe a little behind their peers, they weren't quite at grade level. So it was an invite-only program, we would specifically select the kids we thought would benefit the most from it. When funding got bigger during COVID and, and it was, we had bigger options, we opened it universally, so it was open to anyone. And the reason we did that is what we know from seeing other programs such as Universal Lunch is when anyone can access something, the kids who need it the most are more likely to come. So a, a kid who has been invited to attend a summer program that's only for kids who are struggling, even though we don't say that, knows that they're different from someone else versus a group of kids who get really excited about, we're going to go to camp at Russell School this summer and now all these other kids want to come too. So we were able to offer it universally for, for a number of years. That was extremely successful. Again, it, it just made great opportunities for all kinds of kids. This most recent year, we had to go back to an invite-only model. Again, that was because of staffing limitations, not funding. We knew we did not have enough staff to open it to the universal numbers, so we went back to focusing on the kids who we thought needed it or would benefit from it most.
Any else, a question for Danny? I have one more, but I'm going to save it for Amanda. I'm going to spread it out a little bit.
I love that.
Thank you, Danny.
Is this a hard question?
No. No, I promise. Want me to start? Both of you mentioned curriculum reviews around literacy. How, how soon are you thinking about, I assume this is where at the very beginning stages? So we're not looking at any kind of budget impact for a couple of years?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say not for a year. It's a little bit, it's tricky because those of you that follow, like the way that we teach reading is evolving and the resources are kind of lagging a little bit behind the science of the reading. So I think two things are happening. One, we're trying to build our capacity and learn as much as we can. So when we get to looking at curriculum, we really know what we want. But also, we're kind of waiting for curriculums to evolve to better meet the needs of students because there are good curriculums out there now. But I think if we went to review today, we would end up with one program for phonics and one program for writing and one program for phonemic awareness. And that would be tricky for teachers to implement, but there's nothing that's put everything together into a package that will work well and flow. So part of it is we just need to know everything we need to know to do a good job at the literacy review, like we did for math when we picked Bridges a couple of years ago. But we're also just waiting for the curriculum to catch up a little bit.
Just curriculum review is one of those words that gets tossed out in your, in your budget hair stands up.
Yes. Not this year. And we have looked at the standards and we have identified our power standards for ELA. So that work is complete. It's really down to like what resources are best going to meet what we know is best practice for literacy. And I don't think that's going to be a short process, may take some piloting down the road. And we have some really great resources already in play too, but they're just kind of a mixed bag. Like everything's from a different publisher with a different routine for those sorts of things. And so I think maybe in a year, we might be ready to start really formulating the review.
Have we been looking for a common curriculum for both schools?
For Russell and Memorial, definitely.
That's good.
We try to use consistent curriculum resources and instructional strategies.
Yeah, we do, we always have the same, I mean, with a little bit of New Gloucester gray flavor, but we use the same materials, do the same professional development. And our teacher leaders are always talking about our utilization of resources. So, and actually, in our last two program reviews, we've had unanimous decisions about adopting materials. So they've been pretty, teachers have been pretty tight on what they think is best, so. But we're working on it, but I think it's, it's slow and intentional because we don't want to get ahead of ourselves and we really want to pick something that's going to last for a number of years, until the pendulum shifts.
What happened to the, was it the Susie B. Hawkins or Lucy B. Hawkins? I can't remember the name, but I thought we were committed to that, we sent people to PD for that? We've abandoned that now?
No, 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 no. We're still using definitely our learning that we learned when we did all of that professional development, I don't know, like five years ago or so. We're still using many of the resources, but we've also picked up additional resources that are maybe better supported by current reading research, how to teach reading. So still is the foundation of what we do right now, but we're finding that there are things we have to supplement to make sure that students have everything they need to be successful. So, and that was a great process.
It's not like we're just letting in.
No.
No, 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 no. Our framework, our framework for literacy instruction still stands.
At the time, just things have evolved a lot.
And as we implemented it.
I don't want to give you the impression that like we haven't had.
No, we have a, we have.
We spent a lot of time and energy on that, as I recall.
And it was time and energy well spent. We saw great increases in kids and then we, and then we had this moment where teachers were going, okay, but they're not getting this far, what's going on? And that's been the process by which we've, you know, been looking into, you know, more updated research, engaging in these really deep, complex professional development. And what we're seeing is teachers now saying, okay, so when I see a kid that's struggling with this, let me try this strategy that I learned in this process to move that child forward.
Yeah, and we were doing that when we were implementing Lucy Cockens as well for kids who needed it. But that was sort of our tier-one and then we were providing tier-two and tier-three. And we learned some really important things through that program review about targeted instruction, about how to group students, about the skills that are essential. But just since then, the research has shown that we need to maybe shift our focus. For us, it's a lot more phonics, phonemic awareness, those sorts of things. And we do have a phonics program through Lucy Cockens, it just isn't our end-all be-all anymore. So it's eventually going to be time to kind of look and see what else might be.
It will be time to move on from that, but at the moment, it still exists as the, as the foundational structure of our, of our work.
As hard as it is to believe, that's at least five years, about six. So we're, it's time.
It's time.
It's on that like seven to eight year cycle.
We were, yeah, we, so when I came to the district in 2015, we were in our first year of implementation. So it's been a good decade.
I mean, in these things.
High flies.
Yeah, I mean, I've been around for a few years now and 25, and this happens, right? Like we kind of philosophy, science goes one way and then we go. So what we try to do is make sure we take the best of every resource that we have, the best of every instructional strategy that we have and figure out exactly when it will work best for what kids. So we're never abandoning everything, but we're just looking for, you know, how do we best meet this need today and integrating all the, the good stuff we've learned along the way too. So, and we've got some phenomenal reading teachers, we're very lucky.
Fran?
On the kids and talented, how many students do you have in there?
I thought you might ask me that someone. So we have 73 students total that are identified. So those are the students that would, you know, attend like the, the full math class. We also see 40 students for enrichment each week. So, I don't know, it's like 113, something like that that we are seeing through the week. Most of the students we see directly are at Dunn School and the middle school because once you get to the high school age, a lot of the programming they offer at Great Gloucester High School kind of qualifies as gifted and talented programming. Your AP programming, your IB programming are sort of, we definitely can do some advisory and that's also a next step that we'll work on more next year. But we don't have to offer like a course because the courses already exist with that level of rigor.
So do they remain in their classroom and the teacher comes in? Or do they go to another classroom that they meet?
With the kids that have teacher record, like math every day, they go to another classroom.
So it was mentioned that there is, what is it? Extra students that, one of the schools do have. And 23 students in the classroom? Does that impact that?
At times in a day, yeah. I mean, our, our students come from different classrooms and they don't, like every class does. I mean, our our students come from different classrooms and they don't, like, every class doesn't have a few students that may leave, but a few might at a time. So at certain times in the day, there are a few students that leave their classrooms, math class, and come to ours.
But these seventy-three students, I think I heard you say that they're taught English as well as the math.
Some are, some have both, some have one or another depending upon which areas they're identified in.
I'm trying to get a picture.
Yeah.
So then they're in a in a separate room, these seventy-three kids, and they're being taught the basics in that, well, advanced basics in that room, basically.
Not for the whole time.
So. Not the whole day.
So some students might be identified just for math. Those students, if they are what, you know, made up for just tier three, then for their math period, they're going to see a different teacher than what not GT identified students are gonna see. If students are identified as gifted in English language arts, then they're going to go see the GT teacher during the English language arts period. If they're identified for both, then they're seeing it for both. But we have kids that are identified for just one, just the other, and both.
Yep.
Is there any short overreach in the other schools? The population of the students? Do you have high, high numbers in the other schools?
I I can only speak to Memorial, we don't offer gifted and talented at the K to two level, so I'm not sure.
Oh, I meant, I'm sorry, the size of the classrooms.
Yeah.
Is there?
Are you talking about enrollment and class size, Fran? Yeah, so at our last board meeting, we did a entire, a report on that and I can send you a direct link to that if that is helpful. But most, we, at the elementary level, were generally fifteen to eighteen per class. And then at middle school, high school, we're twenty to twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
And Dunn School, I did miss Dunn School. Dunn School, middle school, high school, we're twenty to twenty-five.
Back to Memorial for a second. Tom, just could you describe library education now, so we get a better hit, understanding of how your library is being used? I know, I, I'm not questioning the age of the furniture. I think some, what I saw in there, my son had around two thousand. So but I'm just curious how, I know that library instructional practice changes over time. So how is, how does Memorial use the library? What's it like?
Yeah, so we have, library is one of our specials. So each class visits the library for forty minutes a week and works with our library at Tech Three on different curriculum. She definitely does a lot around library science, how to use the library, how to find a book if you're looking for it, how to pick the right book. She shares a lot of high quality children's literature with the students and they kind of react to that. Because she's multi-talented, she also does a lot of my digital citizenship work with students and some of our iPad training in there as well. Basically, kind of everything you would need to be able to to utilize the Memorial Library is sort of her bread and butter of her lessons. And then once they have the tools, they're able to kind of utilize it. They pick out books, shop for books each week, take out books, return books. The older kids can take out more books than the younger books, so they learn how to care for library books, which is really important. Don't store them with your water bottle is an important lesson that we teach every time. And Tara Hannon, who is our library at Tech, can speak to it more than I do. But basically covering those standards of library science at the K to two level.
So as much as we might imagine in our digital world, libraries are being utilized less, they're actually being utilized pretty much the way they always have been.
I think in the school setting, they are.
Because every child, every child is in there forty minutes a week.
Yep, and every child has a chance to take out a book, explore books, learn how to find the books that they're looking for based on kind of our organizational system.
Is some of that digital citizenship type stuff, is that in addition to their forty minutes or is that part of their time that's in there?
Part of their time, yeah. I mean, we also do some in the regular classroom as follow-up, but she does a lot of the introductory lessons and during the library time.
So there's a real need for instructional space, it's in there. It's not, it's not just a couple of broken shelves. It's a real need to to examine the use of the space and provide appropriate furniture.
Yeah, and we were using it as a as a music classroom for a number of years when we were real short on space. We don't do that anymore, but we do now host our guidance class in there. So on top of the ten library classes, there's also ten guidance classes in the library each week. So it gets a lot of use right now.
So it does, it has a lot of, a lot of, a lot of use.
And we use it for also like special events because it's a nice big space, you know. So it has to be, the furniture in there has to be able to sort of transform to base, you know, for the needs of the day. Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good point, yeah.
Great, thank you. Anybody else with Memorial School?
Are we still doing GT as well, or are we gonna?
Sure.
I was gonna come back to it. I was sort of returning to Memorial for a moment.
I'm okay.
Do we wanna?
Can I just ask what the acronym PBIS stands for? Because I don't see that broken out anywhere and I know it's.
Sorry about that. Positive Behavior Intervention Support.
And we talked about, Sergeant, and Amanda. PBIS is the term that we used to use a lot.
Okay.
We have transitioned from PBIS to the MTSS or RTIB.
Yep.
They all sort of mean the same thing. PBIS is really just, they're the people who came in front and said like, here's how you can do this work.
Okay.
Well, and as Danny alluded to, there are some things, if you are a real PBIS purist, that you would do that we don't necessarily ascribe to because they're not the right fit for Memorial School, for example. So we kind of are influenced by them, but I wouldn't call our program like pure PBIS.
Gotcha, yeah, no, I was just curious.
I think it's also a confusing acronym and it could, the PB became an acronym for so many other things over the last ten years.
Yeah, that's what I was like, does it mean what I think it means is what I wanted to make sure, okay.
Absolutely.
Would we like to finish with GT while she's standing there? Jeff, you okay waiting?
Oh, actually, I'm okay.
Are you okay? You okay to be put off a little bit?
I just had a quick question.
So let's, why don't we, anybody has any questions for on GT, let's go there.
So my only question was, in the report on the students, you have ELA, math, science, and social studies. Are art and music within ELA?
No.
So we don't have any students identified for arts or music?
Not at this current moment, so we need to. Like I said, the arts program at the middle school did sort of stay alive through the pandemic times. The rest of the program kind of petered out because we couldn't mix cohorts and that sort of thing. So that's why I need to revitalize that. That's a pretty big turnover.
Five years, we haven't had any GT students in arts or music?
We've had them in art at the middle school, but we haven't had them in the other areas yet. So we're working on that. It's kind of a structures, I think we need to work on structurally so that we can provide the instructional time for them because those classes are actually taught by the specialists at the school, they're not taught by the GT teacher. So I need to work with Jeff and Rick to make sure we build a schedule that's suitable for that. So that's kind of, it's a little bit as a multi-step process, but we will get there.
Because they do carve out art and music very specifically.
Mm-hmm.
The law.
Yes. Yeah.
All right, okay.
You mentioned expanding art and music. If that is successful, that expansion is successful, do you consider two staff members still being fully staffed?
Well, what we've been fortunate to do in the past is sort of borrow time from the specialists for art and music at the different schools. So like at Dunn School, we would utilize Jeff's music and art teacher to teach the courses that we offer. So I think if we were to continue along that vein, it works out as long as we can free them up for the additional class time. That's always the tricky part because their schedules are pretty packed with the classes that they offer. If we really got quite robust, it might be something to consider down down the road. But I'd like to build us back to sort of where we were pre-pandemic to start with. And we have a lot of the structures in place, like we have application processes, we know how those things have worked in the past that we could definitely take back out. So it shouldn't, once we get the schedule in place and work that, we should be able to bring that back next year.
Would there be, is there any kind of certification issue if we were to expand into existing staff to fill some of those? If you're gonna make use of a music or art teacher or whatever from another school perhaps for a group of kids?
Yeah.
Is there a certification thing with GT or is that?
There is, when it's reimbursable. So it would depend on how we wanted to deal with that in the financial sense. So there is a certification piece for the for the teachers that are full-time GT teachers. They have to be certified so that we can get reimbursed at a different level from the state. If we went that way, yes, we might, if we wanted to consider, like, a part of my salary is through gifted and talented reimbursable. If we wanted to do that for an art teacher, for example, we would probably have to look at building towards certification. But GT right now is one of those emergency certification areas. So as long as someone was willing to work towards it, it would probably be pretty doable.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I I tend to in my head stretch boundaries whenever I can. Look for resources and it's just my nature.
Well, GT is reimbursed at a different rate, which could be favorable if we were to get to that place where they were spending a significant portion of their teaching time.
Providing we had staff, it was interesting.
Yeah.
Great, anybody else with gifted and talented? Super, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff.
I'll just tell you this, I don't, some people may remember him, but we had a gifted and talented teacher, Terry Weddleton, years ago. He was at the middle school and high school. And he was a musician and he wrote a song on educational acronyms. Took about five minutes to sing and the whole thing was acronyms. It's hilarious. Do you remember that? It was great. He used to get up there with his guitar and sing.
That should almost be required listening. Should almost be, you know, your first.
The whole song would have to be rewritten right now. Because that was twenty years ago. They're all different.
Great, anybody have questions for Jeff about Dunn? What's Fran?
I need a deeper understanding of the restorative practices.
Yep.
A little more description of, you know, includes school safety, but exactly what is it all including?
Yeah, so it's a, it's kind of an extension of our MTSSB work. So what restorative practices is a way of building community within your classrooms in your school. So for instance, each morning, a teacher would, might hold a restorative or a classroom circle. And it's a time to check in with all of the kids, they get to know each other as a as a class. It might take ten minutes. The teacher might throw out a question, you know, how did everybody sleep last night? She might or he might preview stuff that's going on in the day. It's a chance to talk and and build that climate within the classroom. So that's kind of a tier one approach. And then, you know, the next level of restorative practices, when there's conflict in relationship, like I had described when I, when I spoke before, two kids are struggling, they have a problem on the playground. Maybe they get into a little pushing match or somebody says something to somebody else that's inappropriate. The teacher might bring them together and process through what happened and bring them back together kind of into the community and ask questions about, you know, how did this happen? What were you thinking when this happened? What were you thinking when this happened? How do you think what you did impacted the other one? And then they can come to a resolution and move on with the rest of their day. So it doesn't become a distraction for the day or a strain on the relationship that would continue on and interrupt the educational environment. And then if it gets to be bigger, you know, then it might be where I hold a restorative conversation with sta, with the students, bring them together, maybe there's three or four kids that we need to do that little bit of processing with so that we can get beyond what is interrupting the 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 educational environment and so that we can repair the relationship so that we can get back into what our primary job at school is, which is teaching and learning. And then if you get to the middle school and high school level, and the high school's not involved in this yet, but the middle school is, if you had a major event that took place, there might be advocates for both, not advocates, but support for each student. Say you had a fight where somebody was really injured. You might bring them together, you know, the students together with the parents as well as any teachers that might have been involved in in seeing what happened or breaking it up or witnesses and have a conversation about what took place, how people were impacted. How are you gonna move on from that in a way that will, again, allow people to get back to the job of teaching and learning? I mean, you're talking about a, you're talking, at my school, you're talking about a community of four hundred plus people. And when, when things come up that disrupt a classroom or the school, you need to find a way to get past those so you can get back to learning. And so that's what restorative practice is about.
I missed, how many minutes in the morning do they?
Maybe ten.
Ten minutes, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's it's basically the opening of the day. Yeah, it's a quick check-in, there might be a quick question about, you know, something. And then there might be a little bit of a deeper question about, you know, you know, what, what, you know, my favorite pizza topping is pepperoni. And then they might, they all speak at one time, they have a little talking tool, they pass it around the circle. They might say, well, suddenly we know a little bit more about each other, right? And if you do that every day and you have different questions and different ways of sparking those discussions, kids really start to get to know each other, they get to know their teacher, and now they're a little community. Yeah, and if you're a community, you value the people that you're with, so.
Jeff, how do you measure success with that?
With that?
Yeah.
About fights.
Well, I mean, it's not just about fights. But I think, I think how we will measure success is how we can move past, you know, things that disrupt our school day in relationships. And so, you know, if we can see, if we can see fewer arguments or disagreements on the playground or if we can see kids working together in a better way within the classroom as they're doing classwork and and supporting each other when when we're not having a good day, right? And stepping up and because I know something about you, I'm gonna support you as a friend and a peer in the classroom. I think that's where we'll see that success. Yeah.
Is training and stuff for this, is this all within your professional development budget line or is there?
So the grant, this was grant funded through the state. Yep, we simply applied for the program. And and were awarded it. The class is free for all of our staff. So all, you know, fifty-something teachers and head techs that are in the building are taking this or have been taking this and participating on early release with the main safety, school safety center coming in. And we have not laid out a doc.
Will this continue to, will they continue to come in at this point?
Nope, so they have finished their part, they will still consult with me and my implementation team. But really now, the implementation team will continue the work and build upon it.
So this is a train the trainer?
Yep, yep.
At this point, great. Fabulous.
Yeah, it's been great. And they're, and it's, they're going through the same thing at the middle school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Anybody else? Jeff? Sam?
This is more of a parking lot question, but just, you know, to address the substitutes that everybody was talking about. I just want to look, I know that we did our substitute policy in 2022. But I, as far as I can tell, the last time that we reviewed like substitute compensation against like our district peers and all that kind of stuff was 2019. That might be something we wanna look at in the budget process is how our substitute compensation and just sort of general allocation in the budget compares with our peers. I'm not saying it's like top priority, but I don't see that we've done it recently, so it might be worth doing.
I will review because I think we have, I think we have increased subcompensation recently, but I'm.
I think we probably did. I'm just saying, I can't find like a report or whatever, so it might just be something to say.
I think it maybe they just might have done it, but I'll I'll look that up and bring that back to you guys next time we're together.
For some reason, I think some of that conversation was had when we were approving the whole concept of long-term subs.
Yeah.
Bringing people to permanent subs that.
But we initially funded them with ESR money, that's why we had to do it. So I think when we initially were talking about it, it was like, oh, we've got the ESR money. And then we talked about the long-term subs or the permanent subs in the context of bringing them into the general budget. But I don't think we've talked about like, you know, daily pay and, you know, how much we're actually spending on daily substitutes versus the, you know, annual set. Just, I think it's just a little twenty-minute look at what our sort of substitute situation is money-wise. Might be worth doing at one of these workshops.
Great. Fran?
I'd like a little more clarity on the amphitheater situation and what happened with that.
We're not doing that anymore. So when Planson gave us, they gave us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars between Memorial and Dunn School as a, as a grant to promote the arts in New Gloucester. So that's why it was Memorial and Dunn School. It was about two summers ago, I think, that they gave us that, two or three. And so our original idea, we talked about a number of things, but Amanda and I really felt like a performance space that neither Memorial or Dunn School really had would be nice. And if we could do an outdoor kind of amphitheater place. And if we could do an outdoor, uh, kind of amphitheater place where we could hold concerts and different events, that would be fantastic. We actually approached Pine Land to see if they were interested because if it was on the Dunn School property on the lower part that it butts, right, it's on the same side of the road as Dunn. It's on the lower half of, uh, Morris Road. So it would be near their property, it was hard, the ground was already sloped in a way that you could create an amphitheater type of seating. That maybe they would be interested in partnering and maybe throwing in a little money to enhance what we had, um, to build that. And they could use it for outdoor concerts and things like that as well. They were not interested. And the price of materials and what we would have had to do for land work, we had, um, you know, the skillings came out just to take a look and kind of give us some advice on what it might be to do the dirt work and the drainage and, you know, how we might do seating and that kind of thing. If the, the project became too expensive for the amount of money we had. So we shifted gears, we, uh, reached out to Planson and said, would they be okay with us, uh, doing some other things? And they had actually said, well, we'd like to see you do some safety pieces around Dunn School because of traffic. And if anybody's been by Dunn School, people come flying up and down that hill like there's no tomorrow. So. So we, uh, pivoted to do what we're doing now. So the amphitheater's not, not, no longer in the plan.
And the retractable screen, where is that gonna be located?
Uh, right over the stage in Dunn School. That's a minimal amount of money. I think it might be seventeen hundred dollars total, out of a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Indoor, oh, it's indoor.
Huh?
Indoor it is.
Yeah, it's an indoor, it's just a, it's just a screen that comes down. We don't have to.
You don't have to.
Reach a hook up there. Bad at the hook when it's, the loop is closed on the screen. Stuff like that. Does that clarify?
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Have something? Anybody else for Jeff and Dunn?
Uh, I have just one other, and I guess it's, I don't know if it's a parking lot question or if it's worth talking about. But, um, when you think about the preschool, bringing in the, potentially the two and three-year-olds. And we also heard from both of the K-two schools that, you know, kids were coming in with, uh, sort of just way less executive functioning skills. Uh, and we were not kind of clear whether that was sort of a holdover from the pandemic or if that would improve. So it's kind of a, I think it's a parking lot question is, do we need resources or facilities? Or, you know, whether it's more bathrooms, changing tables, sinks, whatever happens to be? Do we need anything facilities-wise to kind of meet a population that maybe we haven't had in our buildings before?
So I, I mean, I, um, my, eh, from everything I've heard, and Chanda may have heard something different, but my, my feeling is that with three-year-olds, it would be more a push out into the community type of thing than a bring them into our physical plant.
Putting someone at a daycare center, not.
So like if we have, am I wrong?
No, 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 you're absolutely right.
Okay, so if we have, well, I looked at your, I didn't know.
I was trying to figure out if you wanted me to jump in.
No, no.
Go for it.
Uh, no. Uh, I mean, this, we started looking at this, uh, when, the year I went to the middle school. Paul and I went to some meetings about this. So, uh, it, it would be, we, we would have to provide the staff or contract with outside providers to push into places like daycares, the home. But the big piece is we would be responsible for identifying.
Right.
In the community and then finding a way to get the service to them. Now, there may be some cases where we need to bring some kids in for certain things, like there might be, you know, uh, our OT might bring kids into our space to do some occupational therapy or, you know, but we also might push our speech pathologist out into a daycare to work with a small group of kids that we identify for speech. So it's not about per se creating space, like a daycare space where we would then, you know, staff that and have a physical plant and bring the kids to us. There is a component about transportation. If we don't push out, we would have to, if we have to bring them to us for say OT, we would have to offer transportation. Now, the parent could choose to, to do that, but we might, we might have to transport them because there is a transportation component in the law. But in terms of a, a large-scale physical plant, that's not what I'm seeing right now.
Okay.
We wouldn't be responsible for providing an education, a uni-, like a education program. Like right now, we have our pre-K kids for a whole day. We see kids with all sorts of different things. We have a set of things we do with all of them, and then some of them get additional services with IEPs. Three-year-olds at this point, what, what the law says we have to do is provide them with that specially-designed instruction or those services that they need because they have a disability.
Right.
That is what we have to do. Then, you know, you start having conversations about, well, what do you want to do that? You know, there, I think there are communities that would eventually consider doing expansive full programs for three-year-olds. I don't think that's where we are at this point. Um, and that's where, you know, part of what Jeff's talking about is, you know, where do we bring them? Where do we go? Do we go into the community? That's been the big part of the, the alliance is saying, can we band together as a couple of towns and get one facility that we're bringing children to versus sending people out? Or at least use some collective, um, power to hire people that we would then push out. But what that model looks like is what we are in deep conversation about right now.
So as an example of that, and so a few years ago, when we were first doing this and Chanda went on this, I believe you went with us on this visit, right? So there was a CDS center, uh, in Gray that took over the old restaurant.
Yeah, it's right next to my house.
Yes, yeah. And I'm not sure if they're still there, if CDS is still there. But they are. So they had talked to us about the potential of taking that over. Because we, it, so, um, you know, that type of opportunity, is there a place? And that's so close to Wyndham, could we join with Wyndham and another, you know, and Raymond and another town to kind of have that place be a center where we brought our kids to get some of those services or kids were brought there? So that's all, you know, there's a lot of thought and planning and, you know, investigation that has to go into that. But that might be the type of thing that.
Yeah.
That we could take advantage of because it's in our town and it's right there, or, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure, like, I remember, you know, sometimes you don't think like the reason we can't have, you know, elementary school kids at the middle school is because the bathrooms aren't the right size or whatever. I just wanna make sure there aren't any physical plant barriers that we're not considering.
There will be.
Make sure we get them, just make sure we get them in our.
There absolutely will be, yeah. Yeah, and I think that's the biggest issue we're hearing from, um, all of our colleagues in the area and statewide, but we're talking about it most deeply in the area, um, is, is number one staffing, finding people to, you know, as we are all struggling to find school psychologists, you, you know, school psychologists are a big part of doing evaluations of, you know, three and four-year-olds. It's not a large percentage of the kids that need to be evaluated, but it is a, a chunk of percent. So, um, finding staff is, is a huge challenge. And then the second one that comes right behind it is facilities. None of us have extra spaces in our schools that are just sitting unused that we could use to provide, to do evaluations or provide services to kids. So what does that look like? And, and we're a huge step ahead. We're, right now, we're talking with schools that have never had four-year-olds before. Um, so we're, we're, we're a little bit lucky in the place we are.
It's funded by CDS, but we are fully in-house program.
Right.
All of our special services.
They are our staff.
Are our staff. CDS reimburses us for them, but they are our staff. We hire them, train them, evaluate them, and, uh, they operate under our auspices. So we're way ahead in that respect.
Much more to come.
Excuse me, how much is, how much is fu-, how much is the state funded?
Um, so I, I will come, I think as time goes on, we can come back to you with that. Um, it's, it's a little complicated, it's a little more complicated. Essentially, right now, with the services that we provide for special education for students who are four years old, we are billing that to CDS. So every dollar that we spent is reimbursed by Child Development Services, who gets their funding from the state. These schools that have adopted three-year-old and four-year-old programs, um, ahead of, ahead of needing to, um, they are being currently funded by the state using a formula. Uh, the formula is the number of students identified, um, with IEPs times one point five times their, um, EPS, um, allocation. And then there's a special add-on, and so it's, it's coming up to a dollar figure that the state is giving them to provide these services. In talking with, uh, Kidery York banded together to offer this, they had never offered pre-Ks before. So they, they went in full, full boat, um, brand new to doing pre-K while taking this all on. I give them a lot of credit. Um, they were sharing with us that right now, the expenses that they are experiencing in these programs um, is coming out even with the funding that they were provided on the per-student level. But that is a learning curve and that's part of why the, the state, um, initiated this. It's called the Early Adopters Program, and it's essentially a pilot so that they could start trying out some of these things to figure out how it all works. But we anticipate that any, all of this work will be funded in a separate set of funding from the state. Um, I know some folks have theorized in the past that it potentially would be rolled into EPS as a total. We, I think those of us on, you know, really working closely with it, um, we don't see that happening in, in the early implementation. I think it will be a separate, um, funding stream that comes from the state because the, um, currently the state funds Child Development Services at a hundred percent. So those services that go to three and four-year-olds is paid for a hundred percent by the state. We are anticipating that as it shifts to our responsibility, that they would continue to fund that at a hundred percent. As you know, things can always change, but we're, we're advocating pretty hard that that's not put in to the, uh, local share formula and that that stays with, um, a hundred percent funding.
And was this bill enacted this year?
No, this has been a long process. The, essentially, um, and if you'd like me to stop and just do a separate report on this at another time, let me know. But essentially, um, the states have an obligation to provide specialized services and evaluations to children, um, birth and up. Every state implements that differently. Mm-hmm. Every state implements that differently. Um, how Maine has implemented that for a lot of years is they have had this separate organization that provided that. So Child, Child Development Service was that organization. A number of years ago, it was identified that that system was not effective and it was not working well. And it was proposed that that responsibility would be migrated to local school districts.
We're only one of two states in the country that implemented this way.
Correct, most other states, it is the local school district's responsibility. So it was proposed a number of years ago that we would start this transition. It was delayed and delayed and delayed. We, in the most recent iteration, um, they have put a timeframe on it, um, that in the next couple of years, it will officially, responsibility will officially shift to the local school districts. But a lot to come on that, what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna work really has not been determined at this point. As we learn more. I will be explaining it to you.
Anybody else with anything for Jeff? I. Was there something or do you just agree with me?
I just said I am all good.
Okay, I think we're all set. We can adjourn without any issues because it's workshop. So we're done.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for your reports.
And control room, we're all set, you can take us off the air.
Thank you. Do you want our yellow sticky pads back?
Uh, yes, I would take those and, uh, I'll bring them back next week.
Next week.
Or if you would like to hold on to your own, you may bring it back. And I won't even.